... leads to the flag of the United States of America. It is we, the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the reason and justice of all.
Open Meetings Act is posted up on the wall over there. All council members are present except for Councilman Doyle. We'll move first into the consent agenda. All items under the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests. Item A, approve agenda as submitted. Item B, receive and place on file all notices pertaining to this meeting. Item C, receive and place on file all materials having any bearing on this meeting. Item D, approval of minutes of the regular meeting on June 3, 2024, is on file at the city clerk's office. Item E, approval of treasurer's report of claims in the amount of $915,953 and 64 cents. Item F, approval of Boswell report of claims in the amount of $151,732 and 21 cents. Approval write-off of ambulance bad debts is item G. Item H, approval of pay request number 19 in the amount of $89,103 and 60 cents, public properties 23FI Incorporated for the June 2022 hailstorm. Item I, approval of pay request number 20 in the amount of $105,000 to 3FI Incorporated for the June 2022 hailstorm. Item J, approval of pay request number 1 in the amount of $277,417 and 1 cent to RL Team and Construction Incorporated for the 13th Street from Oak Street to Beaver Street Concrete Reconstruction 2023 Project as recommended by the Board of Public Works. Item K, resolution number 7325, entering into a hangar lease with JB Air Exec LLC for the purpose of leasing hangar C5 and hangar L11 located at the Beatrice Municipal Airport. Item L, resolution number 7326, entering into a hangar lease with JL3 Aviation LLC for the purpose of leasing hangar 6 located at the Beatrice Municipal Airport. Item M, resolution number 7327, entering into a hangar lease with Chad Lotman for the purpose of leasing hangar D8 located at the Beatrice Municipal Airport. Item N, resolution number 7328, entering into the hangar lease with Chad Lotman for the purpose of leasing hangar E2 located at the Beatrice Municipal Airport. Item O, resolution number 7329, entering into Quonset lease with Scott Fitzwater for the purpose of leasing Quonset number 3 located at the Beatrice Municipal Airport. Item P, resolution number 7330, entering into a ground lease with Evelyn Fitzwater for the purpose of leasing the ground under Quonset number 6 located at the Beatrice Municipal Airport. Item Q, resolution number 7331, adopting the safe haven policy. And item R, resolution number 7332, exiting any and all documents to apply for financial assistance from the Nebraska Department of Economic Development, NDED, Rural Community Recovery Program, RCRP, for the purpose of purchasing and installing ADA compliant playground equipment and other outdoor recreational equipment. Anybody want anything pulled off? Mr. Rue?
Item P.
Okay. Anybody else? If not, Mr. McLean?
I move the items listed on the consent agenda with exception of item P be approved, accepted, or ratified as presented.
Second.
Your vote, please. And that passes 7-0.
I move item P listed on the consent agenda be approved, accepted, and ratified as presented.
Second. Target.
Okay.
Question I have is, we're talking about the ground here. I mean, why, everything's been buildings and stuff. Why is just on this on the ground?
This is one of those things that we inherited from how the airport has been operated for a number of years. Evelyn Fitzwater, she owns the Quonset that's there, I believe, and so she has leased the ground from the city, from the airport, for years, built a Quonset on it, then stores her stuff in it, which is why you see a ground leases time instead of a building lease or Quonset lease.
Okay, so she owns the Quonset?
Yes.
So she's going to be leasing the ground that sits on?
Correct.
Okay.
Toby? Have we ever approached her to buy the Quonset?
We have not. Again, this is the first year we've gone through these leases, and so we have not approached her about any type of purchase.
Other discussion. All right, your vote, please. That passes 7-0. There are no public hearings or bids tonight. Next item is resolutions. Resolution number 7333, executing agreement for professional services with 1898 and Company for consulting services to support the development of a new electric power generation facility as recommended by the Board of Public Works.
I move the resolution number 7333 be passed and adopted.
Second.
All right, so when it comes to electric, you have energy and you have capacity. There are two separate products that are out there. We have both of them under contract through 2030. So what we're looking at here is capacity. Again, we're under contract through 2030, so there's nothing we need to have right away, but what we are seeing out in the market is an increasing price on capacity due to a couple of different reasons. One, demand's increasing for electricity, right? So you're seeing whether it's electric vehicles, whether it's data centers, stuff like that's coming more online, so you see an increased demand across the entire SPP footprint. Two, you're seeing retirement of coal-fired plants, right? So you're taking out generation right now, and so again, you see less supply, hence the price goes up. The other thing you see out there is the Southwest Power Pool is increased or changing their regulations with regards to spinning reserves. And spinning reserves are how much capacity or capability of producing energy do you have to have just running in the chance that you need it. So an example, C Beatrice maxed out at about 40 megawatts, is about our peak, okay? But we have to show that we have 44 megawatts of available capacity. So in the event that something happens, some generator went down, there's a cushion, that extra four megawatts is there to kind of make sure the system can use operate efficiently. Well, SPP is looking to change a 12% spinning reserve requirement to a 15% spinning reserve requirement. And you take that and you multiply it across the entire footprint, that becomes a rather large number. So places that have extra capacity today are not willing to sell it because they're not sure what that capacity number is going to be in the future and what they need to have. And so what we are proposing is that we go out and do a study of the feasibility of having our own generating facility here at Beatrice. So what you have before you is a proposal from 1898 and Company. They are a subsidiary of Burns &amp; Mack. Burns &amp; Mack is the company that handles your landfill. I don't know why they call themselves 1898, I don't know what the spinoff is, but that's what they're associated with. We've worked with John Krasky on this. John got proposals from three different companies. We walked through, made sure we got everything that we're looking for, and his recommendations that we moved forward with 1898. You'll see their proposal there is for $112,500 for this particular study. And the reason we're starting today is because if you were to move forward, right, it's a rather long-term process before you'd have site approval and permitting and construction in order to have everything in place before you got to the end of 2030.
So in doing, excuse me, in doing so, we know that there's other area communities that do this. You noted Auburn, Fairbury, Hastings, or in the BPW meeting anyway. Do we have any idea what Hastings spent on their facility to?
I do not know what they spent on theirs. I believe Hastings' facility is a coal-fired plant. We are likely not in it with a coal-fired plant just due to economics. You're probably more likely looking at some type of natural gas facility. We'd have to go out and look to see what kind of. And part of this proposal is they would come back with some preliminary estimates for numbers.
Yep.
This is just the initial step to look for the future, is that correct, Tobias?
Correct.
So I think it's a good move on the part of the Board of Public Works to bring that to us so we can see what we might be looking at down the road. It's not the shiny fancy objects that are fun to do, but it's one that people don't see that is also very important to this community.
Anyone from the public? If not, your vote, please. That passes 7-0. That is the only resolution tonight. Moving on to ordinances, ordinance number 2416, the third and final reading on the proposed annexation of property owned by the Beatrice Cemetery Association, Gage County, partial number 004240000, and Gage County, partial number 004241200, now plotted as lot 2, Hannah Subdivision, Gage County, Nebraska.
Move that said in ordinance number 24-16 be read by title only the third and final time tonight.
Second.
This is the annexation of the Evergreen Cemetery on the east side of town. We've talked about it a number of times. We've not heard anything additional at the office.
Any third discussion needed? If not, gentlemen, your vote, please. And that passes 7-0. Ordinance number 2416 by title only for the third and final time. Ordinance number 2416, an ordinance to extend the boundaries and include within the corporate limits of and to annex to the city of Beatrice, Nebraska, partial land owned by the Beatrice Cemetery Association, which is adjacent, contiguous, and located in or near the city of Beatrice, Gage County, Nebraska, to provide service benefits thereto, to repeal conflicting ordinances, and to provide for publication in electronic form and effective date of this ordinance. Next ordinance is ordinance number 2417, third and final reading on the proposed annexation of Gage County, partial number 005039000, commonly known as 2876 West Belvedere Road, and that portion thereof now plotted as lot 1, DeBoer Edition, Gage County, Nebraska.
I move that said in ordinance number 24-17 be read by title only the third and final time tonight.
Second.
Okay, discussion.
First off, I want to address a few things that were brought up over the course of the last couple of weeks about this particular project. One, so the replating and the rezoning were initiated by the property owner. The re-annexation was not, right? Annexation is generally initiated by the city, so I just want to make sure we clarify that one. Two, many of the issues that were brought up for the last meeting are zoning issues, they're not annexation issues. They're issues because of where the property is located, the city's extraterritorial zoning jurisdiction goes out two miles from our city limits. So our zoning rules go out that far. So many of the questions that were brought up last time were already governed by our zoning rules, whether they are in or outside the city limits. One of the items that were brought up was about cows. Well, cows have not been allowed on that property since the zoning rule was changed in 2007. Would not allow them, whether they're in or out of city limits. The shoust was mentioned. A year ago, based upon their zoning, they would not be allowed to build a shoust because of the zoning of it and because of the size of the parcel. Now it's been replatted, there's an avenue to move forward to let them have a shoust, and we can work with them, but that would adhere to the zoning rules that are out there. Also, every parcel of land that we have that's been platted and is adjacent city limits has been annexed in the past. So that's why we kind of just move forward with this one. The other issue we have is, again, we have part in and part out of the city limits. So previously, they owned some ground that was inside these limits, it was a different parcel than the ground that was outside the city limits. When they replatted them, they put those two together and intermingled them. You've got to think, when the county assessor goes out to tax it, then they're not sure is it the county levy, is it a city levy? In the old days, there were some other levies that changed based upon if you're in or out, but that's another reason why we can't have a parcel that's part in and part out. So what changes if they're annexed? One, if there's a disturbance, the police department goes out rather than the sheriff's office, right? Heaven forbid they have a fire there, the city fire department goes, not the rural fire department. And then the tax levy changes. So if they're in the county, the tax levy is 1.57, and if you're in the city, it's 1.84. So there's a little higher tax levy for being inside the city. There was a question about a sewer line. So the city code today already addresses the sewer line. If the sewer line today is 600 feet away from their property line, roughly, right, so down at Doyle Lane. The rule is today that if they're within 150 feet of the city sewer line, they have to connect in. So they're at 600 feet, they're farther than that, they do not have to connect in today. So what happens if you move forward? Let's assume the city extends the sewer line down Belvedere and run right in front of the property. Under the city code today, they would not be required to connect into the city sanitary sewer system. However, if we're within 150 feet and their septic system breaks, then they would not be allowed to replace it, they'd have to hook in under the city code. But that only occurs at some point in the future, not today. And then finally, there were some questions about annexing other properties out in that area. Well, again, cities are the first class, and Beatrice is a first-class city, those are cities over 5,000 people, up to Lincoln and Omaha are not, they're special classes. But everybody else over 5,000 populations, a first-class city. We are not allowed to skip annex, which means that we have to annex properties that are adjacent or contiguous to our city limits. The other parcels that have been mentioned today do not touch our city limit lines. If this proceeds, and if you approve it tonight, then yes, it opens up additional properties that we then can look at and we can bring back for further discussion if you guys would like to annex them or not. But today, they do not meet the requirements. So those are some of the questions that have been asked over the last couple of weeks about this. I figured I would kind of run through them and address them, and then turn it back over.
Questions up here first?
Not at this moment.
From the audience.
I'm the father of Chase, who's involved in this piece of property. This property's been in my family for close to 50 years. It was never brought up in the last 50 years that this property's touched the city to annex it into the town until after we plotted it out. We were forced into buying some of this property when we did plot this, and Jay will get into more of that because he knows more about it than I do. But we didn't ask to buy this property, we were told we had to. I just, I don't understand why, and what is going to benefit the city by bringing it in. I know you've answered some of my questions, Tobias, about the sewer and some of this other stuff, but I just think it's kind of a shady deal behind the back, that it was never brought up until the middle of April before everything was up for sale. I don't think if we'd have known how the house would have sold or the property if they'd have known that it was bringing into the city. Because I know my son bought it not knowing it was going to be in the city. So I have a map here, and you've already put it in the city as of the website today, and it hasn't even been approved yet. The green shading right here is the property that you're talking about, and it's already been annexed according to your website. I don't know why you would put that on there if you didn't, it's not been approved. So I still believe if you're going to take this one, then you might as well work your way over to Summer Street. And as far as the cattle go, nobody ever told us. There's guys that have cattle that are over there just north of this property that run them all year round. So if you're going to kick them out, you might as well get moving on it because they're there. And they're within the two-mile zoning district, so I guess you can't have any kind of livestock within two miles, is that what you're saying?
Yes, not what the code says.
You just told him you can't have anything here.
If you go back and read the code, it has to do with whether or not they had cattle the day that the ordinance was passed in 2007.
So basically, those folks were grandfathered in because they had cattle previous to.
We'd have cattle previous there, too. We always did, from when I was a kid.
It's not been contiguous. They haven't, it hasn't continued on.
There's some that aren't continuous either, so I'm just, you know, I'm just stating what I see. This was brought to my attention today, and this hasn't been passed, and this shouldn't be on there. So I don't know who did it, but it is a question.
And we will get to the bottom of that.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'm Chase's uncle, but I'm also, I was also the, in charge of the estate for the Roger Doris DeBoer Trust with, I would like to review a little bit on the timeline, on what exactly happened, and how it transpired because I don't think that the portrayal is exactly accurate. We listed the property, trying to sell it as one block, and with feedback from our realtor, we decided that it would be best, from the feedback that she had gotten, to break the parcels. There was people interested in the house and three plus or minus acres, and she thought she had somebody interested in the development ground. So we contacted a surveyor to come out and give us some advice on what all that would entail. And at the time, the person that did the work advised us of the easements of the alleyways and streets that were on the west side of Bluff Street, and he indicated that it would be simpler if we did divide it to make one straight line as opposed to a bunch of jags to allow for all the city easements. So he suggested I file a request for abandonment of the street extensions that go to the west of Bluff Street and stop at the west side of Bluff Street. So that's what we filed for. I filed a request for abandonment on February 7, and then I was told I needed to come back down and sign another document and bring my checkbook, and I filed another request for rezoning, which at the time when I filed the request for abandonment, the process was not explained to me at all. I didn't know how it was going to work. So back down I went, filed the request for rezoning, and, okay, well, how's it go from here? Well, we don't really know. There might be a hearing, there might be this, there might be that. Okay. So a couple of weeks later, February 29, I received an email from Taylor Rivera about the vacated roadways and alleyways. At this point, I found that all of Bluff Street was included, and I called him. I said, I got a question about your email. I see that Bluff Street's included in my request for abandonment. We weren't planning to include Bluff Street. He said, well, we can get to everything we need, and we're going to go ahead and include it, so that's part of it. Okay. So I talked to the realtor, I talked to the party that was interested in buying the development ground, and they said, yeah, okay, we will, we'll cover half the cost of the additional fees to, because obviously the cost was more because there was more ground. Okay, so moving on down to, this was February 29, now we're into April, April 4. The value of the vacated property was determined, and I got a cashier's check, and I brought it down, and I delivered it to the city office, and Mr. Rivera took it, and he was going to go to the county and have the replating done. So at that point, it all went through, and then I received notice of the rezoning, which at that point, I still didn't really know what was coming next. So then that was in February 20, or, I'm sorry, April 17, received the notice of rezoning via the mail. Okay, I guess that's kind of what we were expecting was going to happen next, and not really any discussion about it at that point, but that's part of the process, and we're, you know, obviously got closing dates and things like that, so we want to keep things moving, so, okay. And then April 19, then I also, then I received the notice of annexation via the mail. At that point, I was a little concerned because I'm like, okay, is this going to cost us the sale of the property when the people that are buying the property find out that it's now being annexed into the city? So I talked to the realtor, and she said, no, she thinks everything's okay. She said, but you might want to call Tobias and talk to him about it. And I did call, I left a message for Tobias. I said, you know, in another week, we're closing, I won't, we won't be the property owners anymore, but I can tell you that they're not happy and they're going to fight it. I left him the message, I never got a call back. So on to April 29, we closed on the sale of the development property, and then on May 2, we closed on the sale of the acreage. So the property's been closed, but I would like to specifically say that I did not request annexation. I was not explained the way the process works. I feel a little bit offended that my name is used, that I requested this, when in fact I did not. I never even spoke with Tobias. Tobias never spoke with me. So to say that somehow there was a request that we get annexed into the city is not accurate. In fact, it kind of defies logic that I'm in the process of trying to sell this ground, and now I want to muddy the waters by creating an annexation situation. I would prefer that it would happen after I was out of it, but my name's been in it now, and so I'm just coming to try to clear the record about how things transpired and the lack of transparency and my thoughts that I don't really like the way things work in a town like this. It's a lithe air all my life. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the audience? Up here?
No, I just want to say, I think that my vote's not going to change, I'm going to stick with my no vote. I've known, known about this stuff for a while now, working on it, talking to, you know, being at council meetings, being at the, talking with the DeBoers once or twice. I think that there was just some extreme miscommunication. I think there's ways to work around it. I don't think passing this is the wisest thing. I think that we can go back to the drawing table and do this a little different way and bring it back and make it so it works for everybody pretty easily. That's all I got.
Anybody else?
I agree with Tim, too. I think we should maybe hold off and bring this back and look at this a little bit differently here and not rush into this. You know, I mean, yes, as we've had the third readings and things, but, you know, with all this other things coming to light and things here that I think, you know, we, it wouldn't hurt us to, you know, put it on hold for, you know, until next session, have it a little bit more time to just discuss it.
Tim mentioned another way. Does he have another way of doing this? What would you suggest, Tim, that we do?
I am not exactly sure how we could go about rearranging the way that we transferred the property. I know the property's been transferred, but I think we could go back and divide it so that we wouldn't have to annex it because we could just dissolve the extensions like Jay had requested, leave Bluff Street there, redo the paperwork, bring it back, and that'd be fine. I don't think it's that big of an ask.
Taylor or Toby, can you tell me something? Give me some direction on this thing?
If you were to do that, you'd have to replat the property, which is probably going to, I don't know what the surveyor cost them the first time, but you'd have to replat the parcel, the property, is what you'd have to do.
I would just add that I've asked about getting rid of a street before, and it was like two grand to replat it, was what the estimate might be, but you just all voted for another $17,000 in bad ambulance debts, so I don't think two grand's too big of a deal.
Okay, then we will move into, okay, gentlemen, your vote, please. That passes 5-2. Ordinance number 2418, an ordinance to extend the boundaries are included with the corporate limits and the annexation of the city of Beatrice, Nebraska, partial land owned, oops, wrong one. An ordinance to extend the boundaries and include within the corporate limits of and to annex to the city of Beatrice, Nebraska, partial land owned by Chase DeBoer and Kyla DeBoer, husband and wife, which is adjacent, contiguous, and located in or near the city of Beatrice, Gage County. of Beatrice, Gage County, Nebraska, provide service benefits thereto to repeal conflicting ordinances and to provide for publication in electronic form and effective date for this ordinance. Move on to the next ordinance, ordinance number 2418, third and final reading on the proposed annexation of Gage County, partial number 005039000, commonly known as 2876 West Belvedere Road, lest that portion thereof now plotted as Lot 1, DeBoer addition, Gage County, Nebraska.
I move that said in ordinance number 24-18, be read by title only at the third and final time tonight.
Say it.
Discussion. Any further discussion needed up here from the public? Seeing none, your vote please. And that passes five to two. Ordinance number 2418, an ordinance to extend the boundaries and include within the corporate limits of and to annex to the city of Beatrice, Nebraska, partial land owned by Ryan Belt and Stephanie Belt, husband and wife, which is adjacent, contiguous, and located in or near the city of Beatrice, Gage County, Nebraska, to provide service benefits thereto to repeal conflicting ordinances and to provide for publication in electronic form and effective date of this ordinance. Okay. Next item is the public forum. The purpose of public forum is for the presentation of an item by the general public to the city council for consideration at a later date. No discussion or action will be taken by the city council at this time. Anyone here for the public forum? Seeing none, we'll move into discussion and reports. First item is Clean City Week 2024 Review.
Good evening, gentlemen. Looking at the numbers that you guys have got in front of you, I'm guessing this year was a good year. It really was. If you look at it from, from all aspects, just some of the high points, our stops were down. If you throw 2022 out, which was a six-month period that was a shortened timeframe for us, 2022 was the, was the six-month, had 700 stops that year, everything was, everything was reduced. If you go off of just some of those numbers, the tons that we hauled just in the last 10 years is what I've got here for tons hauled, we had 166.94 tons. That was the highest that we've had in the last 10 years. 2015, we had 157, 2016, we had 163. So, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, tons. We had, I said that backwards, I'm sorry, 2023, we had 149 tons. So the other years were a lot less than that. 166.94 tons, that puts us at the highest in the last 10 years for tonnage hauled. Our loads, we had about 80 loads hauled. And so with that, those numbers are down to this, with, if you kick out 2022, we haven't really seen numbers like this since 18. So, you know, the numbers were down. Roll-off mattresses, we still continue to have the roll-offs out at the compost site. Honestly, for us, that's worked out really well. We have the message boards out, I've got compost attendants that are out there. You pull through, you show your driver's license to show that you do live in Beatrice, you're able to go through and drop off your mattress. My guys aren't, street side, aren't handling them with the chance of bedbugs that we have right now going around. So it's kind of similar, if Mars goes out and we pick up a mattress, you call in and say, "You've got a mattress you want to picked up," we make them wrap it. So there's, we have the same rules kind of going there. So the guys only touch the mattresses if they're wrapped. But if you look, the second lowest man-hours in the last 25 years, I thought that was something that was kind of nice. And, and with those man-hours, 265 man-hours, again, if you throw out the six-month one, which obviously, we're going to have less man-hours on that one, and you look back, 2017, we had 261 man-hours, you got to go back almost 27 years to get that many low, the lowest number of man-hours. To me, tons up, man-hours down, shows that maybe Clean City this year actually did what it was supposed to do, and it was more large items. So we had low number of loads, high tonnage, and the guys were able to get it done quicker. A lot of that goes to technology that we have nowadays. Within the last three or four years, we went from a Rolodex card that was made out for every single address, we'd have 500 cards on a Monday. The guys would get 250, you were doing east-west roads, give or take, you're going to do north-south roads, you're going to get the other half. And, and so they would go through, they would mark off that Rolodex card, and they would go to the next one. So in the last three or four years, we've went to iPads. It's nice because Dave calls in and says, "Hey, my load hasn't been picked up. Why hasn't my load been picked up?" Gene out at the service center, or I can pull it up on my phone, we can find where the route has been, we can say, "Yep, the truck's already been by there, we didn't pick up your load," because we click on the address, she comes up with a picture, the picture shows us that you had a tire out, and you had some lumber out. That lets us know right there why that item wasn't picked out, or why select items were picked out. So technology has really bettered the program for us. And so, but the costs, another thing that was kind of nice, costs being the third lowest over the, over the last 10 years, again, if you throw out the short year, the costs, that's something that is, is more to it than what might show there too. Diesel's a lot higher now than it's been in years. If you look at that, along with the hourly rate that we pay the employees, we've got longer tenured employees, their salaries are higher, so for us to have third lowest number of dollars spent on the program in 10 years, it's a good thing. So that, and I say every year, honestly, Clean City is a, is a success for Beatrice, it's a good thing, it helps us keep things clean, it looks nice, makes our town look nice. You know, we've got a couple of days where we have a lot of stuff going on, where guys are riding around looking at piles, but if we can get through those couple of days, it does, it is a good program for the city of Beatrice. At $13,113.50, the cost is minimal for what we do, and, and the better, the betterment that we do for the community. You know, one thing that I will say also is probably something that's helped us reduce our loads. With the creation of Mars, we have roll-off boxes that we have down at Mars. We, we have a 40-yard roll-off box down there. My dump trucks that I have out at the street department are about eight and a half yards per truck. So we can get three and a half, four, four and a half, probably four and a half truckloads into one roll-off box. So it, that is, does show why some of our numbers are down, but that also is less miles, it's also less expense, it's less trips to the landfill for everybody. So being able to put more into that one truck and get out there is, is better for us too. That, and with no accidents and no injuries, that's something that we strive for every single year. So no backing accidents, that's huge. No injuries, somebody pulling their back, that's another thing.
Have we managed to lessen the number of mattresses coming in from out of town?
They're comparable, they're a little lower. We had 10 roll-offs this year, those are 30-yard roll-offs. 30-yard roll-off is still a lot of roll, that's still...
Do we still think they're bringing them in from out of town?
Yeah, maybe. We had 10 roll-offs this year, we had nine last year. Honestly, the year that we were shortened, we, we know we've been throwing it out, but we had 16 30-yard roll-offs that year, and that was a six-month timeframe. So that was the year that I personally seen trucks with Kansas plates on them, bringing gooseneck trailers stacked with mattresses in after hours. So that was why we kind of started moving towards the landfill to where we were watching it a little closer. And so 16, 10, 17, so we're lower than what we've been. So it's a good year, still a lot of mattresses, you still got to wonder where all they're coming from, but it's, it's a good program for the city.
Thank you. Thanks. Yeah.
Oh, I want to tell you, I had two ladies call me, and they just wanted to say that your, your gentlemen that were working with you were very, very professional, and they, they thought, thought the world of them, that they, they really did a good job. So I just, just tell your boys they did a good job.
Thank you very much.
We did get comments on how well, how well they did.
Thank you. And, and we do, I, you know what, the street department guys, along with Gene, this year, you know, I had, I had two guys from Mars come up and help for those three days, and so, and, and then the landfill does a tremendous job. And we always think about it, you know, we, we always think about the front side, where it's, it's out picking things up, it's out on the streets, it's doing that. We don't think about all of the garbage that we're actually putting into the landfill, and the guys are out there with the compactor and the dozer, pushing it into place and making sure that we have our compaction where we need to be, so.
So Jason, when you get ready to plan this for next year, I'm assuming you sat down with whoever, but during this week, I took some stuff to, didn't get on the list, didn't, you know, they've gone past me. And so, you know, I was just trying to pick up stuff, pick up full out to the landfill. When you're talking about this next week, you know, maybe you should see, have a, when you're talking about the next week, next year, is waiving, you know, one load to the landfill that saved some of your guys, you know, people that own truck would take it out themselves, and you guys wouldn't have to do it, if they knew if they didn't have to pay for it. So just something to consider when you're having that conversation next year.
And right now, we charge $1.25 per ton. That's not out of the question. The truck still goes across, it still has to have a ticket made, it's not out of the question. The only logistics would be trying to make certain that it's, that it's a Beatrice resident would be the only, but you know, we're doing it for mattresses, so it's not out of the question.
Yeah, it's 17 bucks is the minimum, I mean, that's what I paid, I was under your tonnage, just, you know, everything in there, I could lift myself, it just wasn't a deal, I just, food for thought, so.
Yeah. We've talked about different things over the years, about different options that we could do, so it's, it's definitely something we talked about.
I just think it would free up some of your stops.
Sure.
They did a good job, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Gentlemen? Okay, last item, the city administrator's monthly report.
Yeah, you've had a chance to look at the report, a couple of highlights that are in there, the Chautauqua Park Road, we're looking to re-asphalt that road most likely yet this week. The asphalt company is in, not this week? All right, I'm going to signal not this week. The asphalt company is in, working on Southwest 32nd Street. When they're done with that, they're going to come down and do the Chautauqua Park Road, but obviously, they got pulled off to another job, and so at some point, we'll be down there, we'll let everybody know through social media, but that back loop is what we're looking at. We're looking to probably close that then for a couple of days while they're in there doing their work. 33rd and Lincoln Street, we are set to start next Monday, is when Constructors is planning on rolling into the facility out there and start their work. Again, they are looking at phase one being half of Christ Community Church, remember, we're going to split that in two, so they have access to one drive entrance, not the other one. So they're going to take from there all the way through Lincoln Street, including the roundabout, is what Constructors is looking to do for phase one. Phase two then would be 33rd Street, and then phase three would come back and do that last little west portion of Lincoln Street, which is half of Christ Community Church, back to the west to about 27th Street. That kind of would be phase three. So that gets started. Home set days is this week, we've had a number of meetings with the chamber, making sure we've got everything lined up, and we've got the right cones being dropped off, and right electricity in the right places, and what's turned on and what's turned off, and so we made sure we've coordinated with them, and hopefully, all goes well. And then lastly, Councilman Doyle had asked that I thank everybody on his behalf for those who participated in the community pantry fundraiser, both those who dropped off, donated money, and those who dropped off food items. He said they raised $1,377 this year in cash, which exceeded their goal, and they raised 5,464 pounds of food, which also exceeded their goal, and both of those were records. So he wanted to make sure, he said, "Thank you" to everybody here who participated, and then obviously, everybody who came in and donated money and brought food down to the food pantry as well.
One question, Toby. You were talking about resurfacing down there at Chautauqua. Where are we sitting on the duck pond? I haven't asked you in a while, so...
Duck pond, we're still looking to see what are some options there that we can do to bring that facility back to life.
Okay. The next regular city council meeting will be July 1st, right here at the BPS administrative building boardroom. Mr. McLean?
I move the meeting be adjourned at 7:44 PM.
Say it.
Gentlemen, your vote please. And that passes seven zero.